Hafa Daye, the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, February the 4th, 2022. The time is 9:00 a.m. I will be filling in for Senator Sinagastin as his vice chair of the committee this morning. Senator Sinagastin is feeling under the weather today. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and for accommodating this Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Friday, January 28, 2022, five working days prior, and again on Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022, 48-hour notice. The following items will be heard for this morning's virtual public hearing. Bill Number 155-36 COR V Anthony Ada and Christopher M. Duñez, an Act to amend Section 3606 of Chapter 3, Title 16 Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring updating Guam's abandoned vehicle law. And before we begin, let me go over some general rules of conduct. The Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by me. Members of the committee and/or noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin, please, by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the virtual public hearing by my staff. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engaged in other activity during the hearing. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your removal from the meeting during the livestream. This time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are in attendance this morning. Senator Tony Ada, Senators Senator Telo Titegwe, Senator Amanda Shelton, and Senator Joanne Brown. Good morning, everyone. Also, we have with us Mayor Jesse Alec as well as Mayor Jesse Gogwi. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this morning. And at this time, I will allow the primary sponsor of the measure, Senator Tony Ada, to provide his opening statement on the bill.
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning to my colleagues and everyone on Zoom. Thank you, Chairman, for holding this hearing on Bill 155-36. You know, Mr. Chairman, despite many attempts to mitigate the problem of abandoned vehicles, you know, the problems persist. Much is different today from what it was about 50 years ago when, you know, much of the law was written. Clearly, these laws are in need of updating. And the focus of Bill 155, without going into details, what the bill does is provides a means to get these vehicles off public easements and removes the red tape involved in disposing the vehicles that are junked. I'm glad that the mayor's council and also the mayors are here to provide input, and I look forward to hearing their testimonies. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada. And now we'll begin by accepting testimony from those who have signed in based on the order of how they have confirmed their attendance this morning. So we will begin first with Jesse Gogwi, the mayor of Ordo, Chalampago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all the senators. My name is Mayor Gogwi. I'm the mayor of the District of Ordo, Chalampago. I just want to echo, I guess, what we've been discussing amongst the mayors at our regular meetings with regard to this particular bill. It's a really necessary bill. You know, it's about time that we started taking a look at some of these old laws and how difficult they are in its implementation. The one thing in particular about this bill that is of note is, you know, allowing vehicles that have a certain appraisal value, but if they're on public easements beyond 72 hours, to declare them as municipal waste rather than just going through all of the administrative processes that are in the current law. Because it really makes it difficult and challenging to implement all of these things today, to dispose of these vehicles that are sitting on our easements, and we see them all over the place. And it then sits there for not just three days. It sits there sometimes for weeks, for months. I've got a vehicle out here on Route 10 that has been there well over, are almost a couple of months now. And what we need to understand about these abandoned vehicles, especially on public easements, is they are a true safety hazard, not only to pedestrians, but even motorized vehicles, especially at night, you know, in poorly lit areas. And oftentimes, that's a reason why these abandoned vehicles show up on certain roads is because it's poorly lit and people can just dump them and not be caught. However, the one thing that I think we really need to kind of explore, and I'm hoping that Reverend Tax, I was hoping that Reverend Tax would be here, is really the appraisal. You know, it's an administrative process that is in the law about the appraisal value of these vehicles and that if it's over or under $1,000 and it's sitting on a public easement, it can be declared as municipal waste. And I'm thinking that we can make it even easier than that. You know, online, we can easily access the Kelley Blue Book website and, you know, outline the condition of the vehicle that's sitting on these roads and get a hard copy of what that Kelley Blue Book price is. And if it shows that it's less than $1,000, I don't think that we really need Reverend Tax to be the ones to do it and that whether it be the mayor's office or the DPW or whomever, that should be acceptable enough. I mean, if we look at what we're doing today and how we're utilizing technology to make things a little bit simpler for us, especially during these times of, during the times of this pandemic, I don't see why we wouldn't want to implement the same thing and some of the things that we're trying to bring into the 21st century. And so I really want to explore that possibly, and I hope that it can be made an amendment to this law that the agencies that are trying to dispose of these vehicles, you know, can just go out and obtain its Blue Book value. And if the Blue Book value is such, we can submit that meant to Reverend Tax and ask that it be, the registration be revoked and that it be declared as administrative waste. And it doesn't place a burden on one agency to do that. And so that's really all I wanted to say about this particular bill. But otherwise, I'm glad we're moving forward in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gogwi. Also, please allow me to recognize Madam Speaker Therese Terlahi. Good morning. Next on the list for providing public testimony this morning is Mr. Angel Sablon, Executive Director, Mayor's Council of Guam.
I'm Mr. Chair, Madam Speaker, and all the senators, and of course, my bosses of the Mayor's Council of Guam. Good morning. I'll just read the letter of support that we have transmitted to the Office of Senators Sinagastin. Here, Senators Sinagastin, Buenos Aires, Hafa Daye. The Mayor's Council of Guam submits this letter of support for Bill Number 155-36 COR, introduced by Senator V. Anthony Ada and Senator Christopher M. Duñez, an Act to amend Section 3606 of Chapter 3, Title 16 Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring abiding Guam's abandoned vehicle law. We want to thank the authors of this legislation for recognizing that the Mayor's Council of Guam has and continues to be the front lines where public service begins. All too often, we are called to respond to various situations in our dealings in working with the current laws and regulations. Many don't address specifically, especially, the abated abandoned vehicle law. In our discussions, we appreciate and applaud the intent of Bill Number 155-36 as it seeks to remedy the longstanding issues of trying to locate original owners and treats those high sources of little to no value as litter, trash, or solid waste. Without access to vehicle registration, we have no means to trace and track down previous owners. The situation is further exacerbated due to the lack of government impound lot or contractual agreement of any commercial towing company or private storage lot. The law as it currently exists is impractical and almost impossible to enforce. Abandoned vehicles are often unregistered and may have defaced identification numbers. Abandoned vehicles attract vandals and accumulate other refuse. Some motor vehicle parts contain hazardous substances in addition to gasoline and other fluids that must be properly disposed of. Old vans and truck trailers may be filled with trash or hazardous waste and then left on roadside. Individual cars dumped on streets and easements may contain car parts or other junk and block access to the general public. We do note that there is a cost for the removal and that our offices are not funded year-round, but the recycling revolving fund. We want to go, also note that a program should be set up that would make it easier for someone to call an agency or department and have the vehicle legitimately disposed or removed immediately rather than waiting for collection programs or whenever funding is made available to the Mayor's Council of Guam. This would reduce the logistics and administrative workload on our end. We know that this idea of self-reporting, self-surrendering, and immediate removal could be extended and incentivize those who have white goods, tires, or other recyclables and turn it in for compensation to private companies, saving the government the time and the resources from having to bulk collect it. The permitted recycling and processing companies should be able to charge these recyclables by invoice directly to Guam EPA for payment for accepting and compensating residents. This recyclable goods for cash would put money directly in the pockets of our residents instead of finding it dumped on road sites, jungle areas, and unused tomorrow land trust property. All members present at the regular meeting of the Mayor's Council of Guam on February 2nd, 2022, voted to support this legislation and to further enhance the bill with amendments that may be offered at this scheduled public hearing. We look forward to working with the 36th Guam Legislature on this legislation and to offer amendments that will allow the Mayor's Council of Guam the ability to make the removal of abandoned vehicles and other recyclables a successful program with enforceable and practical legislation. We remain hopeful that this will be favorably reported out of the committee, garnering support from your colleagues, and eventually becoming law. Thank you, Asisus Massey, Senator Menthe, Angel Sablon, Executive Director. I have also transmitted a request for opinion to the Attorney General's Office dated September 24th, 2021, regarding abandoned vehicles on public easements. I did receive a response from the Attorney, Office of Attorney General, on December 10th, 2021, and I've also made that available to the Office of Senators Sinagastin. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sablon. Next, Mayor's Council of Guam President, Mr. Jesse Alec, Mayor of PT.
Hafa Daye, good morning, senators. Thank you for this opportunity. I do want to state my support for Bill 155, and I want to thank Senator Ada, Senator Duñez, and I ask for all the senators to support this bill. As mayors and vice mayors, we've worked so hard, or we continue to work so hard, to figure out how to get rid of all these abandoned vehicles in our streets. And I'll speak specifically for PT. On Route 1, Polaris Point, everyone sees that. Everyone sees cars along Route 1, whether you're a visitor or whether you're a resident. And there is no simple way to get rid of these vehicles. And so we believe that 155 will help us make this process quicker for us. Of course, it still relies on the mayor's council to do the work, and we're always willing to step up to the plate. But we thank you for considering making this process easier for us. And like Mayor Gogwi spoke and Angel also mentioned in his testimony, there are some suggestions from the mayors. But all in all, all the mayors are in support of 155. And there'll always be ways to improve a bill. There will always be ways to improve our work and our process. But this is certainly the right step forward. So Asisus Massey for this, and we do ask you for your support.
Thank you, Mayor Alec. We do have with us Ms. Losia Casil, who's also signed up to testify this morning. Please unmute. Make sure you're unmuted. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Asisus Massey, good morning. Thank you for allowing me to testify and speak behalf, speak this morning on behalf of the HRA Board of Commissioners. The issue of dealing with abandoned vehicles is very important for the authority, specifically within our capital city of Hagatnia. It is our mission to restore and redevelop the city, re-centralize the government, and create economic opportunities and affordable housing opportunities while at the same time preserving, protecting, and promoting the historical significance of our capital. While Tuaman is the tourist destination for sun, sand, and sea, we envision Hagatnia as the destination for tomorrow culture, our history, and community, not just for tourists, but for all Goulmanians to come and learn about and enjoy. As you know, thousands of years of history encompass these 533 acres along the beautiful shoreline of Hagatnia. We have a historical walking trail that we are developing a new marketing strategy for, to engage more visitors. It's heartbreaking to see these giant pieces of garbage left to rot in our streets and our yards when walking through Hagatnia. This is not the image of Hagatnia or our island we want to present to the world when the world returns to visiting us, hopefully soon. We have had an issue with abandoned cars just 10 feet from where I'm sitting right now. There are about 50 cars sitting on private land, many of them with no license plates, leaking fluids. It's a mixed-use residential area. They've been moved from lot to lot to lot within the past 16 months. They can be seen from Marine Corps Drive. This is not an industrial commercial zone. There are serious health hazards and incitement and a blight on our capital city and throughout our beautiful island. So I just want to say that we support this bill and thank you for addressing this issue to update a 50-year-old law and create stricter penalties for violators. This is long overdue, and Asisus Massey.
Thank you, Ms. Casil. I do see Mayor Melissa Savores, Mayor of Dedito, who's logged on this morning. Mayor Savores, if you're here to provide testimony, you may provide testimony at this time.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, Senator Rigel. You know, of course, you know, something, abandoned vehicles is something that we see on a regular basis. We clear an area and the next, within two weeks, you'll see vehicles pop up again. And sometimes tracking, we've tried in the past to, we get the VIN numbers, a license plate, the description, and tracking a registered owner can be difficult for us because what happens is we track them. Many times, they're no longer living on the island or there's no contact number, there's no good contact number for them. And many times, I mean, just recently, there was a vehicle at the entrance to Wistic Road, and the registered owner is deceased, and her family members no longer live on Guam. So, you know, to, one of my recommendations is to possibly, you know, I know that public health does this with food stamp, with applicants, is if they have registered vehicles under their names, especially if they're fairly new, what they do is they have to clear those vehicles because they're considered assets for them. So maybe in this case, what we could do is maybe amend the law, the bill, to include that if they have, they're going to register a current vehicle, DMV can track if there's other vehicles registered to them. And if there is, they need to clear, I mean, know the whereabouts of those vehicles. And possibly, maybe if they're sitting in somebody's, if they had a bill of sale and they sold the vehicle, was never transferred to the buyer, take care of those things. But hold them responsible for vehicles that are still registered under their name and possibly no longer in their possession. That would be one way to kind of eliminate some of these abandoned vehicles that are just laying around in yards and specifically on government easements. We continue, like I said, the mayors continue to remove, and I get frustrated. I mean, we all do. We remove an area and then when it's, when we, within two weeks, even a month, vehicles reappear. I mean, appear again, a different vehicle, same location. And so of course, you know, Joe Public there says, well, the mayor hasn't done anything. And it's not just Dedito, it's all of us. We've continued to remove vehicles. I removed at least 200 vehicles per year whenever we're given the purchase orders. But, you know, vehicles continue to, I say, grow in our village, just like tires and other debris. And Senator, you've been in our village to help us with removals, cleanups. And you've seen, your different groups have seen that even if we cleaned up an area, things grow out of the ground or are put there by sometimes irresponsible people. And it's frustrating because we want our island to be clean and we want it to be safe. And our priorities when we're removing vehicles is anything around school zones or even bus stops because we don't want children to be curious and play in an abandoned vehicle when they're at a bus shelter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Savores, for your testimony this morning. Unless there's anyone else here who would like to provide testimony today that I've missed, I believe I've gotten to everyone who's signed up to provide testimony. This is your last chance. If I'm missing anyone that I don't see on the screen for some reason. If not, we will move now to allow my colleagues the opportunity to ask questions or make comments, beginning with Senator Titegwe.
Asisus Massey, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and Hafa Daye, everyone that's here today to testify and something, and a bill that I think is very important and fully support. And it's important that we do it right. I've been looking into this for a while with regards to abandoned vehicle. Senator Ada beat me to the point, to the punch in introducing a bill. Still doing my research, you know, everything from what the military is doing and what our local community is doing to address this issue. However, I didn't have a chance to read the letter from the Attorney General, which might give us some guidelines. I just scanned through it really quick and noticed something about six months. The requirement is six months. Angel, can you kind of give us a little bit of insight as to what, if you had an opportunity to read the Attorney General's opinion on what you can and cannot do? Have you had the opportunity? If you're not, because it is quite extensive. We can all take the time to read what they had to say. But is there something that's bluntly out in front of you that you noticed that's important?
Thank you, Senator. This recycling revolving fund program, we sent our MOA with EPA to the A.G. in October of last year. It's an MOA that we've never had any problem with before. It was always signed off by the A.G. and sent to the governor and on to the O.A. But this time, there was a problem. And it was, I guess, because of the letter that I sent to the A.G. in September, requesting for an opinion on how do we deal with abandoned vehicles that are left on public easements, on narrow roadways, or in front of houses. A lot of this are happening in Lego and in Kaiser and Sinahania, where cars are just parked there, never moved for over a year, but the owners are the ones that live in the house right inside the fence. And so the response from the A.G. is that although the mayors are peace officers and they can remove these vehicles based on the fact that they can claim them as public nuisance, there is a process that has to be taken. And that process is, we've got to get that vehicle, get a listing, send it to DRT, Reverend Tax. They must have put an assessment on that vehicle. And if it's over a certain amount, $100, it either is put out as a bid, so somebody wants to buy it. It's just the whole long process. And so that's where, that's where we're stuck in right now. He advises that if there's a car on Route 1 or on routed roads that's left there, we can't remove it because there is no government impound lot. And there is no private company that has been contracted to pick up these vehicles. And what makes matters worse is that GPD takes the license plate of these vehicles that are, that they've put over on the side of the road, and then the mayors are not even notified that this vehicle is there. And then we don't even know who it belongs to because there is no longer a license plate to that vehicle. So they leave the car there last night. Guess what? This morning, the vehicle has been vandalized. No more tires, cracked windshields. I don't know how they do it, you know, within 24 hours. So the problem is, we need to have a government lot if we're going to continue following statute as it is now. My suggestion to amend this bill, too, is to just direct GPD that you cannot remove the license plate of the vehicle. Instead, you order the owner or the registered owner that was driving that vehicle to call a tow company, take that car, and move it to their lot. And the billing for that towing must come out of that registered owner's account. And if the towing companies don't want to do that because they fear that the guy will never come back to pay for the vehicle for the towing, then the government should have an account where they contract with this towing company to take these vehicles. Because if they leave it on the road, then it becomes a mayor's problem. Let's the mayors take care of it. And yet, if we want to take care of it, we can't because our hands are tied, according to the Office of Attorney General. So that's what this bill is intending to fix, I believe. And thankfully, there's no better time for it to get it going than now because we don't want to keep seeing all these vehicles. And you said 60 days and all that. There is a timeframe in existing statute. What Bill 155 does is reduce that timeframe to just even 24 hours. And that's what we're looking forward to. We don't have any problems with vehicles being in private property because we get the release from the owners to take the vehicle and take it to a recycling center. We don't have any problems with that. The problem is, you look on Isengang Road, how many vehicles are on that road? If we are to follow the A.G.'s opinion as to the statute, many of those cars on Isengang Road have been there for years. They're all rusted out. Nobody has claimed them. Nobody wants them. But yet, because of the statute, the way it is today, we've got to get Reverend Tax to come and assess that vehicle. Goodness, they can't even issue license, a driver's license, in a very timely manner because of everybody applying for it. How can they go out and assess a vehicle that has sat on Isengang Road for over 10 years? I don't think they're going to put any emphasis on doing that. And so what happens? Do we take the vehicle or we can't take the vehicle? But you know what? Because of safety concerns, we take the vehicle. We're not going to wait till some little kid enters that vehicle, gets all cut up because it's all rusty and all glass broken, and then we're going to make a big issue out of it. So we're going to use the safety concerns to move that vehicle. But right now, to your question, Senator, the way statute is today, it is very difficult. If someday some owner comes and says, ah, you took my vehicle and you didn't go through the process, then we're going to get sued. We're going to get sued.
Right, absolutely. I hear you because there's circumstances where vehicles are left, even in an area that's like a private company, and someone has parked their vehicle there, just left it on their, on their property. And when they call a tow truck to come and take the vehicle, some towing companies will remove the vehicle. However, in some circumstances, they make the owner of the property sign that this vehicle can be stripped for parts and taken because they're taking it to their junkyard. And of course, you know, things like that, it's hard to sign off on because you can be sued. And of course, you know, things like that, it's it's hard to to sign off on because you can be sued by the owner of the vehicle. Um by doing so. There there are a lot of loopholes. One of the issues that I've come across in my research is military leaving their vehicles behind. Their Guam, they call them their Guam bombs, and then just leaving it and being stationed in another area. Now, this is not just Guam having an issue. But um also Honolulu and Hawaii. Um I went as far as contacting people there on how are they uh dealing? With vehicles that are left by service individuals who come are stationed on Guam. And then, when they. Leave island, they leave their cars. And they expect us to take care of their trash. Because for them, it would cost them money to get rid of their vehicle. So the easiest thing for them to do. You know, is just leave it on the side of the road and leave island, and then it costs us to remove it. So what Hawaii is doing is that all servicemen that are stationed in Hawaii must register their vehicle. If they have a vehicle, must register it with on on base in order to uh bring that vehicle on base, etc., you know. And when they leave to be stationed at another location, they must indicate what they did with their vehicle. Whether they shipped it with them or how they disposed of it. A lot of times, when you're trying to get this information on these vehicles. Um one service guy will, he's leaving island, so he gave it to another, but he never changed the registration on it. And then it becomes very difficult to locate that individual. Um so, things like that, we, I mean, it's it's a small. Group that have been leaving vehicles, but it's now starting to becoming more of an issue. As we get more military being stationed on Guam, it's gonna be a bigger issue. And every time they leave a vehicle. It's gonna cost the government of Guam more money to to get rid of it. We're also finding out these vehicles that are being taken to junkyards. Um in the past. These salvage yards usually buy the scrap metal. Nowadays, everywhere in the world. It's being difficult for people to even, you know, have them buy these scrap metals and ship it off to other countries. Countries are taking care of their own waste, everything from plastics to metal to used oil. It's gonna come to a point, we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do with our waste, because some companies won't uh will take it, or countries won't take it. Right now, we're having to pay these people to take the scrap metal off island. Now, that's another checkmark for additional cost. I know that the governor has given you seventeen, well, seventeen million. And you've set aside two point five million dollars, um if I'm not mistaken, for these uh vehicle removals. You know, and it's abandoned vehicles and and other white goods, but that's gonna run out very quickly until we come up with a solution. About individuals leaving their cars on the side of the road and they cover the costs. Because it's it's like free for all right now. Anyone who doesn't want to have their car anymore, it's no use to them. Leave it on the side of the road. The government's gonna take care of it. When I read that it's gonna be about six months to put into a junkyard. Six months, that towing company is gonna charge, a daily charge, as long as that vehicle is sitting. In their junkyard. And when it's time to get rid of it, who's the bill gonna go to? It's gonna go to whoever asked the the um the towing com- company to take away their vehicle. That's why I think many times Guam Police Department, they don't take these vehicles. Like you said, they take the license plate. But if they call a towing company, the charge is on the Guam Police Department. Now, the mayors, when you're asked to bring a tow company to take a car out, it's on your dime. You're gonna have to pay for that. And that even includes the storing charge at the junkyard. That even jacks up. So I think the six months I'm kind of concerned is is way too long to adjust it. Um other than, I'm I'm really, I was hoping that EPA, Mr. Chair, would be here today, as long, as well as D P W. On what they can contribute uh to this uh legislation and and, you know. Stop all these abandoned vehicles that are being uh left on the side of the road for the government of Guam to handle. Um looking at VIN numbers, taking out, you know, all that information, um Mayor Savars. I know you're very active in this, especially in the Dedido Gigo area, because a lot of military are in those locations. Where they leave their vehicles when they leave island, you know. Um are you able to easily? Look at a VIN number, if the license plate is not there, look at a VIN number and call uh G P D to find out who the owner of the vehicle is? Do you have that authority to do so?
Uh what we've done is, you know, G P D doesn't just freely give this information. And so what we do is uh. We can easily take the information and we've actually done this, where uh uh we've done the uh. Actually, we have contacts at G P D and they they assist us in this because they know that we're trying to clear it up. But like I said, Senator, earlier, that half the time, um the, you know, the registered owner either doesn't live here on anymore. The one on Wistic Road recently, uh the registered owner died six years ago and her family don't live here anymore. You know, I know her because she was a retired librarian at Simon Sanchez. And and so, of course, um. You know, those are the current concerns that we have. Uh they didn't, you know, mayors and and the chief of police brought this up the other night when we had our neighborhood. Watch meeting, is that transfer vehicles should be the transferred the same way when you're transferring a firearm. From one registered owner to another, where you literally go to together. The buyer and the seller go together to G P D. To transfer that firearm. Well, in this case, even if you have a um a bill of sale. The buyer and the seller need to go to Reven Tax together. Because, you know, if you're gonna rely on the buyer to do this, they're not gonna do it right away. But if, in order for you to to do that last step. Uh you know, do that together. Okay. And and you mentioned the military, because we've been, you know. We've had this, and like you said, we have a lot of military in the area. We've had property owners saying, the this vehicle was a tenant of mine. Who was stationed on uh the U S S Frank Cable, and they had moved. And what happened was, we tracked it down. But what happened was, they left it to a friend to use the car, because a friend was coming in. And they were, you know, one was leaving, the other one was coming. They sold it to their friend for three hundred dollars. However, the transfer was never done. And and so, we're been victims of that too.
Mayor, can you call Reven Tax? I know that you just said you can call D P uh Public uh G P D to get that information on the owner of the vehicle. But do you have that same ability to call Reven Tax to determine whether there's been a transfer on that bill, on the registration?
Uh yeah, yes, there are times, you know, it's it's really difficult. So we have contact again with D M V, uh you know. Thankfully, so they they are very helpful. But again, uh you know, these people are no longer living in the village. Uh they've moved or they're deceased. Uh so, you know, that that becomes difficult. When we have somebody that's trapped with that. That still lives here, we, that's when we communicate with them. But many times, Senator, uh on Wistic Road, when several, two years ago. When Wistic Road was lined up with junk vehicles uh by the bus stops, uh vehicles were burned. So we couldn't track any information, no VIN number. You know, when you have a burned metal, everything melts down. So no VIN numbers on these things. And they're smart now. They rip off the VIN number on the on the dashboard. And rip off the one by the door, because that's where we find these information. So, you know, there's no identification.
Um the the next wish I have, because Mayor, I believe you answered a question yesterday during the mayor's meeting. I attended that and I was listening to some of your concerns. Um about a company on island that actually buys the scrap metal from from the point of when uh you call the towing company. Uh that cost, most towing companies are charging two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. That's the going rate right now to remove these vehicles. And once the vehicles are removed, um whether you give the okay for them to saying, okay, this is totally abandoned. And um no, no owner, uh go ahead and scrap it. Now, that cost, from what I gather. The two hundred and fifty or three hundred covers that. And then from there, is that, is that, and then from there. I'm I've heard that the towing company takes it to the junkyard and like uh there, uh I mean, Angel Sublone had mentioned. They have to drain it um of all the fluids, um environmental issues. And then from there, they sell, do they? They sell it to the scrapyard, which I found there are three companies on island currently that do this type of shipping off island. So from that process to that process, is that the only cost that you've been charged as a mayor when calling the towing company?
So what we have is our purchase orders because of the abandoned vehicle, the recycling revolving fund. And so. Uh we have two purchase orders, one for a hauler and one for the disposal with the processing of the. What two, there's two companies that are permitted by Guam E P A, and those are the two companies that we use. And so what happens is to to turn it in for the processing is two hundred and fifty dollars. That's to to put it at these companies, Global or or S D S K. And then the, for the hauler, the hauler is a hundred and fifty dollars. So if we pay for the hauling. That's a different purchase order. The hauling is a hundred and fifty, and then the two hundred, two hundred and fifty per vehicle. Is four hundred dollars. I've had residents that said, Mayor, I pay five vehicle registrations a year. And I look at them like, but that doesn't even cover for one car that we're removing from your property. So you know, I see their frustration, because we don't, we're not there as quick as they want us to be. But they have to understand our frustration too.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. And and you know, I'm not gonna be labored any longer, um but I appreciate the time, Mr. Chair, that you allotted me. You know, to ask for something I'm I'm very passionate about and trying to assist uh with these, this littering of our island. But the bigger picture here is the end result. You know, where is it going? Are we gonna still maintain being able to ship these scrap metals off island? One day, we're not gonna be able to do that. Right now, from what I gather, we're paying for them to take our scrap metal. Once upon a time, they paid us for this scrap metal. And it's becoming very costly to our people uh of Guam to to cover these costs. So I wish, again, um I'm hoping EPA would come um, you know, had, actually, I'm hoping they would have been here today. Because I had a couple of questions with regards to permitting of these um these scrap metals or the the area, not haulers. But uh what do you call them, Mayor? The areas, they they're called?
The recyclers? I mean, I, what do you, what do you uh?
On Guam right now. Quite a bit of information there. So you're calling recyclers? I thought they were uh scrapyards. But they're called.
Scrapyards, yeah.
Okay, okay. So that being said, uh Mr. Chair, I thank you for the opportunity and look forward to like making this a stronger bill. To to cover all the issues and the loopholes uh that are there, because four hundred dollars for every car that we. Have to, you know, remove or send off island, you know, this is perfect for people who don't have to get rid of their cars. Because they would have to pay it out of their own funding, their own money. But it's easier for them just to jump it, I mean, to dump it on the side of the road. Then they don't have to pay for anything. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titeguy. Uh just for the record, the Department of Public Works, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. And the Guam Police Department were all invited uh to provide comment by the committee. However, um. They did not uh respond, I I believe. Obviously, they're not here today. So I don't know why, but they were invited. Uh on that note, Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's unfortunate that those other key agencies are not here. I think we've seen in recent years a growing problem with regards to um individuals abandoning their vehicles on the side of the road. Making it a community problem. Uh and I think we just also need to help, even though in spite of the fact that some of them have removed vehicle numbers. As a government, we need to be a little more aggressive, because I've found a tendency, at least that when enforcement is done. Uh most people have a general tendency to wanna comply, especially if they know their consequences. If they know there's no consequences and the government is. You know, never gonna get around to it, especially with the government of Guam, of course. I mean, they'll take advantage of it and leave this to be a community problem. Uh when I was a director of D P W, we had a situation actually in the village of Dedido in a, in a, in a established community with sidewalks and streets. Uh that the residents there had left their their vehicles. Some of these, you would consider, they're no longer uh useful vehicles, they're not operating. But you know, they didn't have space in their yard, so they just put it out on the public easement on the public street. And we could not get our buses to traverse to the different uh bus stops in that particular neighborhood. Uh because these abandoned vehicles had made it difficult. They, some of them were on both sides of the street. That made it difficult for the bus to have enough space to get by. Uh and they're unsightly. I mean, it's unfortunate and and even for some of our residents, you know, they just leave it out there to be a community problem. Or maybe they're gonna get around to fixing it or or selling it or doing something with it. But years later, it's still out there and it it becomes a community problem. And it really devalues the uh safety in the community, especially for the children, as as the mayors had mentioned. Um so I hope, I hope we just don't rush with this bill. Again, I'm seeing us, we know, we move for one public hearing and the bills get on the floor. Uh perhaps we can call another meeting, Mr. Chair, and you do have the authority to subpoena these department officials. I mean, maybe they have a good reason for not being here today. But perhaps you can send out another invitation, because I think this 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 issue is a very important issue, certainly that Senator Ada has brought up with this bill. That I think requires further discussion, because I just don't wanna see we pass something and then for whatever reason, it doesn't get implemented, that it doesn't get enforced. And if we don't have the key government agencies that we need to facilitate this, not present and engaged in the process, then I think we'll have, you know, another set of laws on the books. And then the ultimate objective has not been accomplished, because this is becoming very common. I see on Cross Island Road. Uh you know, again, you see the car the first day, maybe it has a license plate, then by the next day, there's no license plate, there's no tires. Uh we see that the, you know, the windows of the vehicle are bashed in, probably by the fourth day, it's it's set on fire. Um I've had people, because I, you know, I have a family home on Route Four, where uh you know, they had an accident and they they actually moved the car in front of my mother's house. So she could watch it, because they were so afraid, they just needed to come and get it repaired, and I guess at the time could not afford a tow truck. But you know, we had to watch the car, because guaranteed, there are people stopping by two o'clock in the morning to wanna vandalize the vehicle. Um so I think we need to have that addressed. And then the other factor, I I may not be as common, but what do we do in the case if someone's vehicle has been stolen? And then stripped and abandoned uh or dumped somewhere, and then the owner, of course, they're not aware that someone has, you know, they may be aware their car was stolen. But don't know where their their car had been left. You know, what recourse would they have of getting information if, you know, somebody else finds their car? Uh you know, if it's replaceable or not, but at least they will know the outcome, because that's not, you know, that that still happens here in our community. So I think there's a whole host of issues that need to be addressed. Uh but the aggressive enforcement, I and the penalty should be certainly much stiffer for individuals. Uh this whole idea, and I see this trend continuing here in our community, the expectation that the government, the people of Guam are somehow supposed to be responsible. For other people's irresponsible actions. And if if you're, if you can buy a car, purchase a car, drive a car, you have a responsibility to have it registered. You have responsibility also to have it properly disposed if it has met its life cycle. Or if you're gonna sell the car, I mean, making sure there's proper transaction of the ownership papers. I would wanna make sure if I sold a car, I had proper transaction, because if the car pops up on the side of the road and, you know, they're coming looking for me. I wanna be able to show who I sold that car to and the evidence of the legal transaction, so that I myself am not held personally liable. But I think we just need to, you know what, we need to put on our big, big boy and girl pants with regards to these type of issues. But to expect the government to continue with its limited resources to, and you know, even for the mayors to have to be the ones to have to clean up this issue. Uh because we have members of our community that continue to be irresponsible. Um I think we need to shift that direction. I think we need to do a combination of issues, specifically enforcement, because normally the first day, sometimes those uh license plates are there. I'm gonna now make, have to make sure I photograph these vehicles with the license plates before they're removed, because I don't know if the individual, maybe their car broke down. And they need to get it, you know, get get repaired or get a tow truck out there, whatever the case may be. Uh but at the same time, I I'm not all for the idea that the government should carry this burden. I think we need a lot more aggressive stand with regards to registration. That's why we register vehicles. We don't just register vehicles to give Gov Guam an extra hundred plus dollars a year on all our vehicles. I mean, there's, there should be a database there available so that we can find the information. Not all of these cars have their um their identification numbers obliterated. Or removed. Uh but even then, when the I D numbers were there, you know, government agencies weren't, Reven Tax wasn't doing anything about it. Uh and none of the enforcement agencies were doing anything. Revantax wasn't doing anything about it, and none of the enforcement agencies were doing anything about it. And so as long as people know the government's not going to do any enforcement, they're going to continue these bad practices. And I think collectively as a community, we agree, this is not what we want to see. It's not safe, it's not desirable, and, and you know, it, it's just, it's not something even pleasant to look at in our community. So I just hope, Mr. Chair, you do have another meeting with regards to this and you do have the authority to subpoena if necessary to get these key government officials to respond to what we're seeing as a growing problem here in our community. So hopefully, as we move forward with this bill, it will actually have the teeth it needs and, and the attention of the key enforcement agencies to, to address this issue. With that, I have no further comment, nor do I have any further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. And I'm pretty sure that Chairman St. Augustine, the main chairman of the committee, as I'm just the vice chair, I'm pretty sure the senators in Augustine will follow up with these agencies and either get some form of written testimony or of course, it'll be up to him if he wants to have another hearing and bring them before the committee. I see Mr. Sablon does have his hand raised. I apologize, I didn't notice that earlier. Mr. Sablon, did you have something you wanted to add to the conversation?
Yes, I just wanted to correct Senator Tytey's on the 2.5 million from ARPA. That is not for abandoned vehicles. That was given to us by the mayor, by, by the governor's office for island-wide beautification. We're getting our abandoned vehicle funds from EPA as the legislature has appropriated 1.5 million. So we're doing that this fiscal year. We just started. We just started yesterday because of the delay from getting the approval from the Office of Attorney General in approving our MOA. So $850,000, out of that, I think we already put out 700,000 in purchase orders. And it, it started yesterday and today we're issuing out more purchase orders for white goods. So we'll just keep going down until we get tires, electronics, and greenways all into this program. But I just wanted to correct you on that. And then on the cost for the abandoned vehicles, it is 250 for the processing center, which is, there's only, there's three on island, actually. Well, actually, there's five, but only three that accept Governor Guam POs. And now it's only two that accept it because the one that used to take abandoned vehicles, they're up the yin yang with vehicles that they're not yet able to process and, and take off island. So there's no more space for them to put the vehicles. And as far as the haulers, it is 150 per vehicle, but if it's coming from Inalahan, Malissou, and Humatec, it's $200 per vehicle. So depends, it's, it's either $400 or 450 per vehicle for processing and hauling.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just because you answered that. Thank you. Angel, and the funding that was given to you for the mayors, the 17 million of the 2.5 I was talking about, do you have the authority within the mayors to utilize that money for, well, you talked about white goods and tires, but can you also incorporate abandoned vehicles to that?
Yes, we can. But, but because we have the 1.5 million from EPA, we want to exhaust that first and make sure, because we don't want, you see, the, the, the 2.5 does not have an end date of the fiscal year. We can still use it up to 2024. But the 1.5 million, whether we use it up or not, ends this fiscal year on, on September 30. So we want to use that up first before we use the money from ARPA.
But you also have the ability, excuse me, legislature has the authority to also allow you to use that funding lapse for the next year too as well. It's not like you'll lose it, right?
We've, we've tried that, Senator. In fact, the language has been in our budget for the past two years, but the ruling of the attorney assigned to EPA is that because the EPA money is not general fund money, it cannot lapse. It has to be returned back to EPA and they reissue it out as a, as a funding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks. Thank you, Angel.
Senator Tytey, I also see Mayor Gogui has his hand raised as well. Mayor Gogui?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, and I applaud, I appreciate Senator Brown's comments about maybe, you know, doing a subsequent hearing on this bill and getting DPW, GPD, and of course Guam EPA involved in the process. But I, you know, I also want to point out and hopefully emphasize that we really need also DRT's input on this bill because what always bites us in the butt is not just implementing or enforcement, but it's the administrative requirements behind that. And since DRT would be the one to revoke, you know, registrations in the event that we're looking at a vehicle who has, that has a, a value of less than $1,000, I'd like to get their input and whether or not it is in fact viable to have our offices go in and, and do a Kelly Blue Book evaluation, print it, and then forward it to Revantax and so that it, 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 it allows them to, to just review what has been assessed, provided with the, you know, Kelly Blue Book and pictures, whatever it takes, you know, and then hopefully get them to quickly turn around and, and declare these vehicles as, as municipal waste versus, you know, something that has to be put in a lot and potentially auctioned off. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Gogui. At this time, I will recognize Madam Speaker Theresa Line.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the mayors who are here to testify and of course, Mr. Sablon from the mayor's council. Your testimony, of course, is very helpful. You're the ones who have been picking up these vehicles or being responsible for getting rid of them and, but I, I share the frustration with my colleagues that, you know, we really want to solve it. We need to solve all the issues that the mayors have brought up and we do need the, the Department of Revenue and Taxation. This bill is imposing on them other duties and we need to know, are they going to do this or not, right? And how quickly? Or is there going, is there a faster way to do that, like, like Mayor Gogui suggesting? I think we also need GPD because, you know, we're also talking about a government impound lot and, and that we heard from the AG that there isn't one and that, you know, that's the delay. I don't know. I want GPD to tell us where else can we put these vehicles? Do we have to call in a government impound lot or can we call it some other word? And then, you know, we're, we're done or, or anything like that? If, if there's like a holding, if there's required holding. I also wanted to hear, and so EPA, of course, I think they should be here. They're the ones really ultimately responsible for removing these things, right? And they've delegated this out to the mayors with the recycling revolving fund and, you know, kind of allowed you to do that with those, those monies. But ultimately, you know, EPA is responsible, I think, for, for ensuring that our waterlands does not get contaminated, that, that the health and safety of the, the people living in these communities are protected and removal of vehicles is, you know, necessary in order to do that. I, DPW for obvious reasons, but I also wanted to see the Attorney General's office because, thank you, Mr. Sablon, for this guidance from the Attorney General regarding your current practice or your current MOU, right? The questions that you had asked. But the bill is also proposing changes to the law and I want to know from the AG, can we do this, right? Can we, can we give just 24 hours, post it up on a website and then destroy or, you know, do something with somebody's vehicle? If, for example, as Senator Brown pointed out, that was a stolen vehicle? I don't know. You're right. And, and what I'm not understanding is how we are solving with this bill the vehicles that don't have the VIN numbers, right? So this bill mandates that Revantax is going to identify the vehicles, right? With the VIN numbers. That's what they're going to post on the website. So how do we solve the problem? That seems to me, every time we have these round tables regarding abandoned vehicles, that's one of the larger problems is, is the ones without the VIN numbers, right? And I think that's, that's why sometimes the mayors are, are delayed or GPD, you know, so their authority kind of shifts. So if I could just ask the mayors a couple of questions. One is, the statute that cited in this bill, this is abandoned vehicles removal and sale, Section 3606 of Title 16. Is this the statute that you currently use? Is this your current authority to remove the vehicles? Is this what you're using?
No clock.
But that's because that's the, the statute, the way it is now.
Okay, right. So that's what the AG says. You use this statute currently, right? None of you is using the public nuisance to remove vehicles. You're all kind of using this. I mean, under the RRF, right? When you use the recycling revolving funds, it's, then you use this authority, right?
Right. The, the way we're removing vehicles now is mostly from private property where the owners are giving us a release of liability. That's how this program is going.
Okay, that's my next question was to say, so you, you are not currently able to touch vehicles that don't have VIN numbers and you can't get consent of the owners. Is that correct?
If they are on routed roads.
If they are routed roads, then, then what? You are able or you're not able?
We are not able to. We can remove it. We can remove it to an impound lot, which we currently don't have and the government doesn't have. And then from there, do the process as the statute currently says must be done.
Right. So that's what I mean. So for all practical purposes, right now, under the current statute and despite the RRF money, you're unable to remove any cars that don't have VIN numbers or consent of the owner. Is that correct?
It's not that just they don't have any VIN numbers. They may be perfectly good cars, but they're not registered. They're cited today by GPD, but tomorrow there's no more tires and windows bashed in. So nobody wants to come back and claim it, especially if they haven't registered the vehicle. That's why they got pulled over and cited. And so what do we do with that vehicle? We move it for safety, we move it for safety reasons. I know Manila moves it to a place right behind their office because they don't want it, you know, sitting on the side of the road. Some of these vehicles are put right next to bus stops and you know, our kids go there. So the mayors, every mayor is displaced with this. They, even though the AG says you can't take that vehicle because you've got to follow statute, I just mentioned earlier, we do it for safety reasons. We move it because if a kid gets in that vehicle and gets stuck and gets cut or whatever, then who's going to say hi? We follow statute.
All right.
So we do, we do, we do technically are not supposed to move it, but we move it because we have to.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So that's, I guess my concern is, so the bill continues to talk about a police parking area, a garage or a licensed public garage. And on another place talks about a, a government of Guam impound lot or a towing company's lot. And then it talks about a metallic waste disposal facility. So I, I wanted to confirm whether you are removing vehicles and taking them straight to the metallic waste disposal facility or you're taking them to other places now. So now I hear it's a mix, right? You're using RRF to remove vehicles and put them into some, some lots, not, not, not yet, I guess.
If, if these, if these vehicles, Madam Speaker, are on those routed roads. But if they are on private property and we get the release of liability, it is picked up by the hauler and taken straight to the processing center.
Okay.
Maybe perhaps I can chime in here. We can probably also ask the Director of Bureau of Statistics and Plans because he has been assigned by the Lieutenant Governor to find that impound lot by the Islandwide Beautification Task Force. And I know that he's actively looking for that lot.
Okay, I, okay. Yeah, well, that's important because, yeah. Otherwise, the bill is not removing that impediment that we need some kind of government lot or recognize, you know, one of those words that I just read, either impound lot, garage, government garage and, or whatever. But it's not removing that requirement. You're still going to have the same problem and it's not removing the requirement that, you know, Revantax posts the VIN numbers. And what if those are destroyed? Those are the ones I see, the burned cars, as Mayor Savaris talked about, or the ones, as you said, if they're parked overnight, by the next day, they'll be stripped and, and the next day after that, further stripped. And you just see this and I'm, I'm pretty sure there are no. So I asked this at one round table that we've had before, well, what about those where you can't find the VIN numbers? You know, what are the mayors authorized to do? And I think really, yeah, that, that's an issue we need to, to really resolve. And I'm not sure that's resolved here. Does the RRF currently pay for any storage fees or only disposal fees at, at the disposal companies? No, right? According to your testimony, it's only hauling and, and disposing, not storage, right?
Not storage.
Okay.
And I, I think, I, I know, Madam Speaker, but I really don't need, see the need for a government impound lot. We already have junkyards, licensed junkyards around the island. Why don't we just contract those junkyards to receive these cars? Because if we do have another impound lot, we have to provide security, we have to provide fencing, we have, we've got to spend a whole lot more money.
Right. Well, was that discussion brought up with the Bureau of Statistics and Plans? Who you?
Fast force, but Mayor Hoffman is, but I can bring that up, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they're, they'll welcome all your suggestions and they should do an analysis as to what is more cost effective. Yeah, I would appreciate that analysis as well. I agree with you, whatever is the most cost effective way to temporarily store until, I guess, right? According, if this bill.
Yeah.
They would store it for 72 hours or something or, but I'm not sure what happens if there's no VIN numbers. It, it's just not clear to me in reading this bill. What, what do you currently do? I mean, are all vehicles eligible for the disposal site? Even the burned ones? Yes, okay.
Yeah, yes, they are.
Okay, great. And then, and then the other thing that I feel like is not really resolved here that I've heard the mayors say on different occasions is, is as you described, you know, I think several of you have described, it's that, it's that the year-round funding, you know, the funding, you know, needs to go year-round to, to do your program, to, to haul and dispose. The MOA is sometimes delayed, right? Every fiscal year, you start that process all over again. We need to resolve that and we need to resolve the delay in purchase orders so that there's no gaps in, in your ability to do what you, what you are currently doing successfully year-round. But I totally hear you when you're saying it's, it's, it never ends. And I don't agree that, you know, if people remove the VIN or the identification of the vehicle, that then the government, I mean, we're going to bear the cost either way, but that the government, you know, that they're going to get away with it. So I, I do want to know from GPD, how else can we enforce that, right? Like, yeah, that's all I really want to know. It's kind of like, otherwise, yeah, we're, we're kind of encouraging people to remove the VIN numbers, dump the car on the side of the road and they're, they're scot-free. And I want to know if the GPD has any other way to, to curb that, right? And because the, the cost would definitely skyrocket. I thought, Mr. Sablon, you have an excellent idea about, at the point of registration, if any individual in Guam wants to register a car, that they, that all of their vehicles be accounted for, right? That, that's one way. I mean, so I, I think there are ways to do that and I, I thank you for your recommendations. But, and again, thanks to all of you mayors for the work that you're doing to do this. And I hope that we can, you know, resolve all your issues and not just kind of shorten the time period of, of the 20, you know, current number of days of, but, but do a little bit more because, yeah, it just, I, I really think we need that, that working group to, to all confirm at the same time, this is workable, this is legal and this is enforceable, right? I, it has to be enforceable and we have to find a way to, to get around those people who are, will actively remove VINs so that they don't have to bear any costs. But thank you. So, or, or liability rather, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mayor Gogui, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, and Speaker, great, great, great comments. You know, but in addition to GPD, I know that the Department of Public Works has the ability to issue notices of violation. And really, that's what it is. We're talking about vehicles that are obstructing public easements. And that include, you know, and, and the shoulder of the road. Uh, and that include, you know, and and the shoulder of the road, uh, or half on the shoulder, half on the road. It's still an obstruction on public property or public easements. And I think we need to be able to expand the ability of allowing DPW to issue notices of violations. And in addition to that, allow them, like Guam EPA, issues notices of violation, allow them to issue these notices of violations with a fee attached or in a a fine attached to these notices of violation. In most jurisdictions, you know, abandoned vehicles or what they call inoperable vehicles is really, uh, a a code violation against a a public ordinance. You know, wh- when we talk about GPD, the thing about GPD is everybody thinks they're more criminally related enforcement. Or they enforce things that are criminally related. What we're trying to do again, it's the administrative things, uh, and the way it's written in our local laws that ends up biting us in the butt and has conflicts, et cetera, et cetera, that makes it difficult to implement these kinds of issues. And so we can make it simple, like we, you know, they do in in other US jurisdictions in the States where, you know, we we look at it more of a code violation or an ordinance violation, and then just be able to attach fines associated with those violations. And and if it needs to be adjudicated, allow it to be adjudicated in, uh, traffic court if that's necessary. Uh, but when it's a code violation, I don't even think it needs to be taken to court. They can appeal to, you know, like a Guam EPA violation. I believe if if they assess a fine, the appeals can go and be uh, adjudicated by the board or, you know, internally. Same thing with DPW. If there's a fine associated with the violation that they issue, that the the if there's any appeals, it's done through an appeal process internal to DPW. Uh, without getting the courts involved. I I mean, I'm not an attorney, obviously, but we really need to try to simplify this and streamline this so that all of these administrative requirements doesn't prolong the time it's going to take us to get these vehicles safely off the road and and properly disposed of.
Yeah, thank you. I think that recommendation's been made in other enforcement agent, by other enforcement agencies to switch to, uh, code or ordinance violation versus criminal and get the fines faster, things like that, as opposed to pursue criminal, um, complaints. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Gogwi and, uh, Madam Speaker. Senator Perez.
Hoffiday, everyone, and thank you, uh, for your testimony. Um, apologies for being late. Um, I really liked the the last suggestion. Um, I think when we talk about environmental, um, any infractions, a lot of times I think the administrative way of of finding them is is a good way. And like you were saying earlier, Mary Gogwi, you know, administrative process might be able to ease some of this, uh, the issues. But I I I'm also listening to the conversation very closely. Um, I think it's important to bring all the stakeholders together so that we can coordinate what is the and facilitate the removal of abandoned vehicles, especially now. Uh, we're having, we're finding it harder to actually ship them off island, uh, with, um, you know, places accepting these. And, um, I I think if we can streamline this process, uh, and so when the the markets are ready to receive them, we have them all ready to go. And, um, you know, I'm, you know, definitely want to hear more of the conversation. And, um, I'm in support of having another, uh, perhaps a round table so we can, you know, finalize or get some some traction on this. So I appreciate everybody's, uh, participation today.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Shelton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Hoffiday, everyone. Thank you to the panel for being here for all of the uh, comments on the bill and especially the recommendations, uh, to ensure that we are, uh, moving forward and addressing all of the concerns, uh, from you, the mayors and the mayor's council of Guam. Uh, knowing that you are on the ground and you see this issue in your villages every day. I really appreciate the recommendations to help us uh, to get this right. Uh, and I do appreciate, uh, the author of the bill and the the intent, uh, for us to address this issue, uh, for safety, for environmental protection, for island beautification. Uh, this is really addressing so many different points and a a longstanding issue for the island. I wanted to ask, uh, the mayor's council of Guam. I was, uh, perusing the website and I see that you have a very up to date website and there is a a portion of this bill that would require you to, um, to, uh, put up the vehicles on your website as well. Uh, is that something that you have the capacity to do at this time?
Yes, thank you, Senator. Uh, yes, as long as we're providing the information. But this, of course, has to come from DRT. That's why it's very important that there be the old LinkedIn together because we can't just get it from GPD without getting it from DRT because they're doing the assessment of the vehicles. The way the law, the the proposed legislation is of that, if it's a hundred dollars or less, the mayor's can just dispose of it. If it's a hundred dollars or more, then it has to go through another process. So, yes, but to answer your question, yes, we can, we can put it on our website.
Okay, thank you. I want to ensure that you don't need additional resources. I know some of our, uh, agencies have websites that they use and the uh, updating of the website is outsourced and that it's not something that they can do on a daily basis or a regular basis. But if that's something that you have the capacity to do within the mayor's council and within your office, I think that's that's a a great thing to know and, uh, know that we're giving you an additional duty that you are capable of at this time. So thank you very much. I think most of my, uh, questions were asked and answered in the earlier conversation. So thank you very much and I look forward to, uh, supporting this, uh, bill and, uh, a way forward for, uh, the mayors here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Senator Shelton. Senator Tidaway, did you have something? Could you, uh, be, uh, brief, please? I have some questions as well that I was going to ask.
Just a quick question. Um, Angel, how long, uh, does a towing company hold a vehicle, uh, before selling it for scrap?
Senator, we don't, we don't deal with them, uh, towing it and selling it. We deal with them towing it directly to the recycling center. So they don't hold it. They, the the day they pick it up, it has to be turned in to the recycling.
Okay, so it doesn't go to the, um, it goes straight to the recycling company then?
That's what's supposed to happen, but I'll be very frank with you. We've had some haulers that picked up the vehicles and took it someplace else. And we know what we did with it. They took the parts they wanted. Then after they took that, then that's when they took it to the recycling center.
Oh, wow.
They are no longer doing business with us.
Okay, so you have no authority if a vehicle that looks perfectly fine, sitting on the side of the road, that's been there for, let's say, couple of days, hasn't been stripped or anything like that, and it's obviously a safety issue. Um, can you as mayor's, um, call a towing co- company to remove it and, uh, but not for, you know, abandoned, but just have it removed because it's a safety issue? And taken to a towing company, uh, yard? Can you do that?
Yes, but who, uh, but then again, who's going to pay the storage fee?
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That that, oh, and the last one is under Bill, uh, one fifty-five, where Guam will, um, where on Guam will abandoned vehicle be placed at if it is deemed municipal solid waste?
Then we would have the authority to pick it up and bring it straight to the recycling center.
Okay, so so.
We're not going to open up our own, we're not going to open up our own scrapyard.
Okay, so municipal solid waste to you is the recycling, um, facility. Okay, thank you.
encompasses tires, greenways, electronics, white goods, the whole, the whole gamut.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just want to make that clear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Okay, I have some questions. I'm not sure who can answer it, but I'm assuming maybe someone from the mayors. Maybe one of the mayors would have a better understanding of it. You don't have an exact number. I'm just wondering, does anyone have an estimate for the number of abandoned vehicles on Guam today?
We, I don't know about the mayors, but I know from the data we get from the program we started, every time we put this out, we collect nearly a thousand vehicles in in a four or five month period. And there's still many, many more out there. And 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 Senator, um, you know, where a lot of these vehicles are at, they're on Tomorrowland Trust property.
Okay, um, that's sort of.
Let me share this with you. We, in my village, we keep a running total. So you know, what we try to do is we actively engage our community that if they have a, an abandoned vehicle that they need to get rid of, you know, come pick up a form, fill it out, we'll give them the placard to mark the vehicle, et cetera, et cetera. So that even whether we have funds for it or not, we can identify where these vehicles are at. And in my village alone that are registered, that need to be hauled away, I currently have about a hundred and sixty-eight. And that's as of last week, a hundred and sixty-eight vehicles that need to be hauled. And that doesn't include some of the vehicles that we still have in the village that are on shoulders that technically nobody owns and nobody can give me a form for because it's not theirs to release. It's not on private property for them to release. The hundred and sixty-eight is just vehicles that are pe- that people need hauled away because it's.
That was my next question. Are most of the vehicles that you guys are hauling away on private property?
For me, yes. For for order to the POGO, yes.
Well, that to me is already, uh, and you guys are paying for it. You're using the revolving recycling fund. But my question is, why, when you know who the owner is, it's on their property? So perhaps the revolving recycling fund money should be refocused more on the vehicles along the sides of the road that are truly abandoned, where you can't identify the owner. Instead of doing someone a free service where you go and remove the vehicle that's sitting on their property because they want to get rid of their abandoned vehicle. At that point, that's easy. You know who owns the vehicle. It's on their property. That's where you cite the owner. That's where the ordinances come in. Uh, there was talk about ordinance, uh, violating city ordinances. That's where there's a violation of city ordinance. You're not allowed to have an abandoned vehicle on your property. You go and you cite the property owner. You tell the property owner, get your abandoned vehicle off your property. You own it. It's on your property. It's registered to you. Take it to a junkyard, do something with it, get rid of it.
Well, you know, Senator, if I may, if I may, I I, you know, I hear you. I mean, I hear you. And so if you talk to some of these, uh, people that are asked seeking assistance on removing these vehicles, they'll tell you, it says, well, why can't, you know, why can't we have these vehicles removed from our properties? Isn't that why we're paying into the abandoned vehicle fund when we register our vehicles? And those are for the vehicles that people own that are no longer operable and they really don't have the resources. They they don't want to add, you know, uh, to their cost of getting rid of it because that's what they supposedly paid into, uh, to get rid of it, you know, while, you know, paid into when they registered their vehicles. And ultimately, when it needs to get rid, rid, rid of, the government's going to assist in getting rid of it. What concerns me and the reason why there are so many is you have these people that are are, uh, are back backyard, uh, mechanics and they just stockpile and stockpile all of these vehicles that people are getting rid of and they mass it. And then when it gets to a point where they can't, they don't have any additional use of it, then they call the mayor's office to get rid of it. That's where I have an issue. Because they're not the ones who paid into the abandoned vehicle fund for those vi- uh, vehicles. Um, it's the owner that gave them or a friend of a friend of a friend who gave them the vehicle that they're massing to, uh, to make money on. And now they want us to get rid of it. When you have people who are doing that, they should be assessed the cost. You know, um, see in some jurisdictions, I know I own a house in Clark County, Washington. And they will not allow property owners in urban areas to have any more than two in, they would call it instead of abandoned vehicles. They call it inoperable vehicles. They will not allow anybody to have more than two inoperable vehicles in an urban area within visual sight of the road or within visual sight of their neighbors. Anything more than that, they, if if a if a neighbor or somebody who's driving through the area complains about it, then the the owner of that property has thirty days to get rid of it. And if they don't get rid of it in thirty days, they are fined. They are fined to get rid of that vehicle, uh, because they failed to get rid of that vehicle under an ordinance. Now, in an urban area, it's, 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 um, I think it's two vehicles still visible from the road and two vehicles, um, uh, no, uh, up to five vehicles visible from neighboring properties. And they don't have to be occupied properties, but from neighboring properties that adjacent property owner complains about it. And so if there's more than five inoperable vehicles, um, uh, within visual sight of adjoining properties or two from the road. And it's a complaint is made to the county, then the county goes out and issues a notice of vi- a notice of violation. Not a, 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 a ticket, but a notice of violation. They're given thirty days to get rid of it. If they don't, then they're fined. And that's why I'm saying we have agencies that can do that. And and then assess a fine and and be done with it. But we need to make the process simple.
Sure, understood. The point I was trying to make is that, um, this is this, this shouldn't be an issue of money. If it's an issue of money, then the money should be focused first on the truly abandoned vehicles on the side of the road. Use the revolving recycling fund. Get rid of the vehicles on the side of the road where you can't find the owner. Use the fund to pay for that. Then whatever funds are left over, that should be used for the private property owners who can't afford to get rid of their vehicles. And now it's becoming a nuisance, a public nuisance. And, you know, try to find and cite who you can cite, you know, for violating, um, whatever, uh, ordinance there is. I don't know exactly what there is in the books, but I'm certain there's something in Guam law that says you can't have too many abandoned vehicles on your private property. I'm, I'm pretty sure there's something somewhere. If not. There's nothing at all.
There's nothing in the law that allow, that that limits the number of inoperable, inoperable vehicles on private, private property. You know, we talk about this nuisance law. Then it's, it's a, it's a, it's an objective, um, a, a pin, a, a, or subjective opinion rather than an an objective opinion of what is deemed a nuisance. But getting back to what you're saying about abandoned vehicles on easements. Now that we have these funds available to us to remove abandoned vehicles, I go through the village. I I go and I take photos and I take VIN numbers and I tell my staff, these vehicles are on public easements. You need to tag them. And then we give them seventy-two hours to get rid of the vehicle. Those are always the first ones to be removed from my village. I will not remove anybody's vehicle from anybody's property until I get all of the vehicles off the easements. Now, remember, vehicles grow on easements. It's like weeds, you know, you get rid of them and then a month later, another vehicle sprouts. And so as long as I have monies, vehicles on public easements will always be my priority in getting rid of. The thing that I try not to do is tag them. I don't tag them until, um, I get that pu- purchase order in hand. And you'll see a, a, a vehicle on Route ten that we've tagged, you know, near Father Duennas, because now we have a purchase order in hand. And it's sitting on a government easement, but I consider that a, not just a nuisance, but a safety hazard. And that will, that will go. Uh, that will be one of my first vehicles to go. And I'm not trying to, to, uh, to sit here and say I'm going to go against what the AG's o- office had had determined, but I look at my mandate as the mayor of this village. My mandate is to ensure the health, safety and welfare of this community. And when I deem, when I know that something is unsafe, it's going to be gotten rid of. And so once I get rid of all of the vehicles on all of the public easements that are an issue right now, today, once they're all gone, um, and as soon as they're all gone, then I proceed to go through that list of a hundred and sixty-eight. Now, understand you, I got rid of, uh, about seventy-eight vehicles last year. And I still have a hundred and sixty-eight on my list. I mean, it grew. I think I got it down to about a hundred and ten. And so when, when, when the program ended at the end of the fiscal year, I got it down to about a hundred and ten and I still have fifty-eight that were added on, um, since the end of, uh, or the start of this fiscal year. And so fortunately, I've been given enough to ho- uh, monies to move a hundred and I am hoping to move, remove a hundred of those hundred and sixty-eight. But I guarantee you, it'll grow because I've got people in my village and at least four sites. Four sites in my village where people are massing cars. So they're taking them from wherever they can throughout this island, bringing it on to their properties, taking what what's, uh, a value on that vehicle and then calling my office to get rid of it. As fact, I put them on the bottom of my list. Says, well, you made money off this vehicle. I need to get the ones off where there's one car here, a car here, et cetera, et cetera. I'll take, and it is really first in, first out. You know, but these, uh, these people that are massing vehicles, I I manage them last. You know, so we do have a, I think most of the mayors have a, a order of 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 priority on the removal of vehicles. And we will all. And we will all tell you, most of us will tell you that the removal of vehicles on public easements is always our priority.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Alec, you had your hand raised? Unmute? Sorry, you're on mute still.
Sorry.
There you go.
Not being an offense? Your, your, your initial comment about the, about, before Mayor Gogwe, I wanted to say that 155 does address the, the vehicles on government easements. Because that's, that's our issue now. And government, Mayor Gogwe, what Mayor Gogwe just said is what we all want to do. But our hands are still tied. So this 155 does address that. I also want to say that 156, that, Bill 156 that Senator Ada introduced as well, allows us to give those citations. And I know that, that, you know, we all have comments about how that, that'll work better for us. But we, if 156 goes through, then we could actually give those citations as, as nuisances, right? As public nuisances when it, when, when referring to the private property, the vehicles on private property. I just wanted to comment on that.
Okay. I did have another question. How often, when you find the abandoned vehicles, is the VIN? I heard that you guys said the license plate will be missing because sometimes GPD removes the license plate. I'm not sure why they do that. I'm assuming they're doing that so that someone else doesn't steal the license plate and put it on their car to commit a crime. But I'm not sure why they're doing it. But how often do you come across abandoned vehicle where the VIN number is, you're not able to find the VIN number, or the VIN number is damaged or destroyed? Is that, is that normal? Or is that regular? Or is that rare?
Well, if I, if I, I'll, I'll interject. I mean, because we, we look at this all the time. I'd say probably no more than 10%. So if I have 100 cars, probably no more than 10 is a vehicle where I can't get the VIN number. And so what oftentimes what we try to do, Senator, is we try to see if we can open the hood and take a look at the engine number. Because sometimes we can get information on who owns the vehicle from the engine number as well. Well, I mean, yeah, just, you need staff who knows where to look for these things. I've got a bunch of mechanics on my staff.
It's usually inside the door. Anyways, there's different places where they put the VIN number, but I know from experience where the VIN number usually is.
Well, no, it's not the VIN number. The VIN number is missing. If the VIN number is missing, door in the dashboard, then I'll actually go and have them look and see if we can ident, get the engine number off the vehicle as well.
Understood. But most of the time, the VIN number's there is what I'm hearing, right? That's not a huge problem. It's rare occasion when the VIN number's missing. Maybe the car's burnt and the VIN number somehow got scratched off or whatever. So most of the time, the VIN number's there. So that tells me most of the time, there should be a way to identify the owner. Now, I know it's gonna take time, but obviously that would be through Revantax. Revantax has the VIN number of every registered vehicle on Guam. So you don't necessarily have to go through GPD, but Revantax has that information for every, or they should have it readily available. I don't know how easy it is to obtain that information from them. If you guys, is it easy to get that information from Revantax? When you call up and say, here's the VIN number for this vehicle, can you tell me who owns it?
Yeah, well, you know, I, I see Mayor Alec shaking his head no, and I concur. I, you know, getting a phone call into Revantax is a challenge. You know, because they're not just dealing with vehicles. You got property, DRT, income tax, et cetera, et cetera. That's one of the reasons why most of us go through GPD is because they can just pull it up on their, you don't go through GPD, Mayor Alec? I go through GPD. And so, and so it's, for me, it's, it's been easier to get it through GPD. But, but yeah, I mean, I, it would be great. I mean, consider this. It would be great if we can have just read-only access to that information. I mean, I'm hoping, again, with technology, we can move in that direction and get real, read-only, read-only access into these government databases.
Right, that, that's a great idea, actually. It would be good if you guys could just type in the VIN number on some database somewhere that you have access to. And then that VIN number shows the last registered owner, and then you can contact that, reach out to the owner somehow. And that might help. What is the biggest, I'm sorry, Mayor Alec, did you want to say something? Go ahead, please.
I do, actually, Senator. Thank you. I, I want to say that most of us are fortunate to be able to get through an agency. But I'm here for the entire council, and not all the mayors have an access person, have a point of contact for GPD, DRT, EPA, so on and so forth. And that's not fair. It's not fair because not every mayor can, can get the, the information they need right away. And so Mayor Gogwe is correct, and that's what I've been wanting to say, is that we, if we could get some kind of limited access so that we don't, we, we don't have to rely on GPD, DRT, and so on, then of course, that, that would be ideal for us to identify the owner. And Mayors of ours is correct. We, again, those of us on this call are fortunate enough to have a contact, but not everyone does. And that's, it's not a standard operating procedure. And if we could make it, then it would make our, our job easier. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mayor Alec. So what is the major, the largest impediment to removing abandoned vehicles along the side of the road?
Urban statute.
What specifically? Is it the administrative process? That's the biggest impediment?
The process.
The whole process of certified mail, 10 days for them to respond, going through DRT? That's the, that's the main issue for you guys to remove abandoned vehicles?
There's no government impound lot. There's no contracted impound lot. There's nothing.
Okay.
I mean, if I may, just really, I mean, and it is. I mean, in fact, Senator Rangel, moving an abandoned or inoperable vehicle off of private property is about 99.9% easier than technically removing an abandoned vehicle or inoperable vehicle from the side of the road because of the administrative and legal requirements as it states in the current law. And that's why I think most mayors will tell you, we're very appreciative of Bill 155. Because it's, and it's an effort to address the challenge, challenges we currently face based on current law on removing vehicles from public roadways or public properties in, in general. And so with all of the suggestions that were made here, I think we're pointed in the right direction. And if we, you know, but, I mean, we probably should get and obtain the comments from the agencies we were talking about. DPW, GPD, Guam EPA, and, and for me, DRT, Revantax. And then Angel had mentioned, maybe inviting Tyrone Tyten from Bureau of Statistics and Plans because he may be able to share some of the challenges that he's been facing and trying to find an impound lot or a storage lot that was, that was a task to him by the Lieutenant Governor, excuse me, under his Islandwide identification task force. And so getting input from these agencies is critical. But at, at the end of the day, I think what we're doing here, and what this bill is intended to do, is to streamline the challenges we're currently facing so that we can effectively, you know, manage a program that allows us to safely get rid, and legally get rid of these vehicles that are, are hazards to our roadways. So thank you.
Thanks. You know, looking at what the AG wrote to you guys, the AG said that, the AG is basically saying you guys do have the authority to remove vehicles from the side of the road, but you have to go through these administrative processes, right? One of that involves, you have to, you know, there's a time limit, 24 hours, 48 hours over the weekend. But then you can remove it, but it's, says it has to be stored in a police parking area, a garage, or a licensed public garage. So I'm wondering, with a licensed public garage, I know there's mention that there's no actual facility right now. Licensed public garage looks, sounds to me like it could be any lot on Guam, as long as it's licensed as a public garage. So I don't, I, I would have to look up what the actual definition of licensed public garage is, but it sounds to me like it could be any one of these junkyard storage facilities. Perhaps they just need to fill out some.
I, I think we'll discover when you, when you do the research, Senator, is when we talk about licensed public garage, that's where Guam EPA comes into play. You know, you're ta, talking about storing, you know, a, a number of vehicles. It could be in the hundreds if, if nothing changes, that have fuel and oils within these, with, in all of these individual vehicles. So the reason why it becomes a licensed garage is because there's got to be some Guam EPA permits or licenses or permits. It's really permits that need to be issued so that, you know, we're not talking about something, you know, an area that's going to have all these vehicles over a prolonged period of time, and maybe possibly being affected by the elements that could potentially leak some of these things into our, our environment and potentially affecting our aquifer.
Right. What I mean is we have junkyards now who are licensed, and they're already storing vehicles on their yard for a long time. I just go to any junkyard.
Yeah, and that's, that's because they're EPA certified.
Right. So I'm saying perhaps one of them could be the licensed public garages. I don't know exactly what the requirement is per this specific law, how this law defines a licensed public garage, which I'll have to look up. But I'm assuming it could be any one of them. If not, it's probably a simple fix to allow one of them to be a licensed public garage so that the vehicles can go there. Now, the other issue I know you guys mentioned is that the problem is when it goes to the license, to any licensed public garage or storage facility, then there's a fee, right? Storage fee. So I think the answer to that would have to be whichever garage is considered a licensed public garage by the government of Guam. They should have some sort of negotiated storage fee with the government of Guam for the abandoned vehicle program. I think that's the answer to it, is you do like a negotiated thing and say, you're only gonna charge us X number of dollars to be our licensed public garage to store vehicles in there. And then there should be a way to, in the past, I know some public, some junkyards would only charge, it all depends on the yard. But I worked in insurance before, and we had junkyards that we would have vehicles sitting at as a claims adjuster. And I know from experience, at least this was a while ago, so prices have probably gone up. But they, they used to charge us if it was a, if it was a junkyard that we had a relationship with, with the insurance company that we did a lot of work with, we negotiated with them, and we would get like $10 a day storage fee. So this thing requires 10 days before they reclaim a vehicle. If it's at $10 a day for 10 days, it's only another $100. See what I mean? So I don't think that's too expensive. My point here is that I think we're making this more complicated than it is. There's got to be a simple answer to this. And I know that's what Senator Ada is looking at with his, with his bill. So I don't want to keep this committee any longer than we've already been in this hearing. It's already almost two hours. Perhaps we do need a follow-up hearing, but I'll leave that to the chair to determine whether or not that's necessary. I think there's a simple answer for this. I don't think it's that complicated. There's money for it. There's enough. I think there's enough money for it. You guys have said the biggest impediment is the administrative procedures involved. So I think it is just a matter of figuring out those administrative procedures, and I know that's what the author of the bill is attempting to do. So it sounds like so far, most of the testimony from the mayors is in support of the measure. That's correct? Okay, with that, Senator Ada, I will allow you the opportunity now to ask any questions you may have or provide your closing statement on the measure.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for having this public hearing on Bill 15536. I thank the executive director of the mayor's council and the mayor that came out to testify on this bill. Is Bill 155 the silver bullet to all? Absolutely not. But it's actually moving in the right direction in getting these abandoned vehicles off our streets. I mean, if a, if a vehicle has been there for a week or two weeks, obviously, no one has come to claim it within that time. It's gonna sit there until eternity. The trees will start growing out of it with the current process. 155 streamlines this process. You know, we've, we've heard Speaker come out and talk about VIN numbers. If there's no VIN numbers or engine number, then you know what? It's a park. It's no longer a vehicle because there is no VIN number to it. What we need to do is just get it off the streets. The longer that we take in trying to clear our islands, roadways and, and from these abandoned vehicles, they're gonna start stacking up faster than we get them off the streets. 155 streamlines this process, gets them, picks them up, and takes them straight to the recycling center. Just like the mayors have said, I'm in support of the mayors in moving this process forward. I will talk to the committee chair in moving Bill 155 onto the session agenda. And hopefully, we'll be able to get this thing going so that the mayors can keep our villages clean and our streets safe. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Thank you, everyone, for participating in the hearing today. Thank you, mayors and my colleagues, for all of your participation this morning. Thank you, Executive Director Angel Sablon, as well, for your participation. The public hearing will be closing. The committee will receive testimony for the next few days for the acceptance of any additional information or public testimony on the agenda item discussed. You may submit testimonies to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjosangustin@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and providing feedback and suggestions. The public hearing is now adjourned. The time is 10:46 a.m. Thank you.